The late call order, the Board of Education meeting for Monday, August 25th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for official allegiance.
Welcome to the United States of America. And to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
All right, let me, um, real call please. Heather Anil Roberts, Jennifer Baker here, Andy Hulley, Michael Emery here, Amber Burkett here, John Highstreet, Lee Brean. Mr. President, we have a form. We don't have any recommendations or presentations.
Nothing tonight.
Somebody make a motion for the consent agenda items?
Make a motion that the Board approves all consent agenda items, including all items A through C.
Support. Movement supported, any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries? All right. All right, information items. Wow, I didn't even know. All right.
All right, well, they said we, today we had our first, uh, first day of orientations. Uh, it was for grades 10 to 12. You know, getting their schedules, turning over their cards, getting their pictures taken, all that good stuff. So we had really good percentage of the kids show up, which is good. Tomorrow's a bigger one, generally get more for the kids for grade 7 through 9. So we gotta make sure to have that locker key ready, so getting them in their useful lockers and here. But it's good to see the faces, a lot of good turnout. Big thank you to secretarial staff and custodians, they did a good job of getting the buildings ready and prepared. And they always do a great job of helping out the parents, so kudos to them. We are also doing a, uh, Wednesday, the 10th, at 6:00 PM in the lecture hall, we're doing a, a parent informational meeting that we're gonna do, and it's just to cover a bunch of things. It's more geared to grade 7 through 9, but all parents are welcome, because we know there'll be a lot of, or kids that might come from another district or people just want to refresh themselves. So we'll go over Skyward, we'll go over the attendance policy, we'll go over, you know, uh, uh, clubs, we'll go over like kind of the different pathways we have at the high school. So just a bunch of stuff that we're gonna cover on those things, so just hoping to be answered.
What mean, what night is that?
Yeah, it's gonna be Wednesday, uh, the 10th.
Is this something that came out of some of your parent discussions?
Yeah, one of the thing that we had talked about before, and I brought to Ryan last year, was just something, and a lot of it, like he said, I, I think it's that younger grades, but the seven, you know, it, it seems when we went to the 7-12 building, we, some of those train, natural transition meetings, we, we still do a transition 6 to 7, but we lost some of that. Probably the one that may be even more important, and I'm glad that, you know, we're kinda open up to everyone, is that 8th grade to 9th grade, 'cause that's where things start to count, credits start to count, and that's where kids kinda maybe are starting to make that decision of, am I going in a tech path, am I going in a middle college path, am I going in an IP path? So, uh, yeah, I, I think, hopefully we get some decent attendance out of it.
Yeah, we said, we're, I think our goal is to try to do another one, like even at, like at, like the beginning of second semester as well. So try to catch the parents as much as possible to gain that information.
That's a great idea.
Uh, all the fall sports are up and running, so we've already had a few of the games already. And we had our football team, Marston Football Team, that begins away against Carver Mooney at the Marine City Stadium. The handbook committee, a couple weeks ago, for the high school met, and there's really just two big changes that we made in the handbook. First of all, the cell phone policy, we felt that was, that what we did second semester was effective, so we continue with that policy. That it's just kind of throughout the school day, it's not allowed, it'll be allowed in the cafeterias during lunches during that time, that the only time you'd be allowed to be on and out. However, we are, uh, going to have all earbuds and headphones from home banned for the entire day. Now, we will have some school-wide ones that we'll hit, we have the school-owned ones for people who might have dual enrollment, working out in the library, or for class in DM4, if they're connected to Chromebooks, that we'll have some sensitive that, that teachers can use. But we felt as staff, those were almost a bigger distraction even than the cell phones themselves. So there's the, there, those are gonna be banned throughout the school day, even during lunch, during those times. There'll always be exceptions as well, because we know there are some students that are NIPs or final course that might need that. And we, even like with cell phone flash, there's some people with medical conditions that needed them on there, and we'll run a spreadsheet that all the teachers will be aware of, who, who was allowed to have those, and you know, so we had that in place. Another thing we put in place is, again, we, we have the attendance policy in place where, uh, once they're on contract, there's a certain amount of days, there'll be a great, uh, there were grade reductions. We also felt there was a couple times that students, once they got to their, they felt their, their graduate, what they needed to graduate, to stop for coming altogether, so we wanted to kind of put a kibosh on that. And so we're putting a cap at 20, uh, 20 days per semester, which is a lot for a semester to begin with. But once they get to 20, they'll no longer be able to participate in extra group activities such as dances, walking at graduation. But of course, all, that can always be appealed, just like them being on contract can be appealed, because we know there's always extending waiting circumstances, and they just, you know, they would just have to appeal that to, to administration, review those, and go through that, and talk about them, for two big changes they have to make. And then lastly, just, uh, we have, uh, really, again, we, we only, we had very few turnover on the staff. We just had Hope Rosky came in, she'll be taking over Lucindara for Spanish, so we're excited to have her onboard. And then, uh, also, it was nice to see that the college advisor got.
That was great news.
Yeah, reinstated, and so Jane Blair, we picked prior to, before it got shut down, she is gonna be our candidate, and she's gonna be in place. And so we're happy to have somebody in place, and always staff, we're ready to go.
When does she start?
They were talking October 1st.
Yeah, I was gonna try to get her, we already got her FAB and stuff like that, so I think she's gonna try to get in even earlier to kind of get, meet with the kids and get them started.
Great, great. Mr. Stacey?
All right, well, our custodians have been working super hard at Algonquin this year. We've had a lot of teacher classroom movements, and they knocked it out, and we're trying to get some improvements going in the art room, so they've had to move the art room twice, and it's a lot, so they've been working really hard, and, uh, the building looks great though, the inside and out. And we're just doing a few last things before open house, so we very much appreciate them. Um, we did have to fill one special education teacher position, and we were able to hire Corinne Hallam, and she comes to us with, um, several years of special ed experience already. So I'm excited for that, and that's somebody we have to put through school, you know, that still needs to go to school and get trained. So she's been in a bunch, and we also have a new para, Julie Colley, um, joining us. We actually hired her last year, but she wasn't able to come until the school year, so, um, working on a few more special ed para positions. Hopefully we'll get those in place before school starts. Tiffany Dawson ran summer school for us, uh, K through 5 at Algonquin, and it was very well attended. Again, so many of our own teachers were teaching it, and our own paras were there. So it just kind of meets the kids where they are, and, and keeps them, keeps them busy, and reading, and doing some scheduled things over the summer. Also, um, I know Melissa will probably hit on a lot of this, so I, I'll just say my appreciation to the staff, because they have worked, the teachers have come in a lot over the summer, some have pursued their own PD even outside of what we've offered here. And, um, on rainy days, they've been in every day in August, getting their classrooms ready, and a lot of them look like they're ready for open house.
Ms. Peller?
I hope everybody's in the next summer. Um, we were fortunate to have a lot of staff participate in the summer school over at Algonquin, so that's always nice to have those familiar faces working with our students, um, also participating, which I'm sure you'll touch on in the report cards, and restructuring that. Our custodians have worked diligently throughout the summer, so making sure our building is ready for our upcoming school year. Meanwhile, these last couple weeks, teachers have been coming in, organizing, decorating, making sure that we have a nice warm welcome environment for our new families and returning families. As far as staff goes, we did get to welcome two new staff members so far. Elena Carroll is joining us for 1st grade, we also have Shannon Van Bell as one of our, excuse me, Shannon Van Bell is one of our special ed paras joining us. Um, and we're still looking at a couple other para, para professional positions at this time. And then mostly, we're just looking forward to kicking off the new year, and we'll do that at our open house this Wednesday.
Thank you. Ms. Basil?
So our summer program is coming to an end, and it's a new school year right around the corner. We had a fun-filled summer, but ready to get back into the school routine. Um, our teachers are using this coming Friday to get their classrooms ready for the new year, and we also have a CPR and first aid renewal training. Uh, our classrooms are filling up super quick, we only have a few stuck spots left in our preschool classrooms, all other rooms are full, including Latchkey. And preschool open house is Wednesday, September 3rd, for students to come in and see their classrooms and meet their teachers.
Ms. Tanner?
It's kind of a busy summer, yeah. Um, so this summer, we've had lots of teachers coming in, and it's been great to see them not only give up their time, but like be excited to do it. So, um, August 7th, we had Eric Crankin to do some chemistry and physics training, um, with Experienced Chemistry and Experienced Physics. It was a great training, I sat in on it, Nish sat in on it as his mentor as well, and Ben Ryan was in on it too. So, uh, a good team of us to be able to support him, see the program, and follow through to see what we need to do. So the trainer, um, was an experienced teacher, you could tell as she was training, so the training went very well. Um, our, just recently, on August 20th, our 6th through 8th grade ELA teachers came in for a full day for a training with Big Circa. So it was, um, a very in-depth training where we did a lot of work, they're very excited to hit the ground running. Um, the high school English teachers have also talked to us, so they're signing on to kind of get a look at what this is all about, and what they're doing, and how they might be able to take pieces of it, especially some of that SAT prep, um, to implement within their classes as well. So those teachers are looking at doing that pilot, hitting the ground running, um, they were very excited, were very thoughtful throughout, throughout the day, asking great questions that way. Throughout the summer, all instructional materials have arrived, with the exception of K-5 Amplify, and I'll touch on that in just a minute. But everything else is ready to roll out, teachers have been in getting things together, so that's good. So it, the Amplify thing is, is really great, and then it's like, oh! So we got notified that we were receiving a grant here about, what was it, the 3rd week of August meeting now? And it's a substantial grant, um, 35, through, profiled $140,000, so to update our, to the 3rd edition, the new incoming, you know? So I sent out, I talked to Brooke and Amber, and we weren't sure, 'cause it's so new, if we were gonna roll it out this year, or just wait till next year, 'cause they just did all that training and implementation last year. So we surveyed our elementary staff, and they got back to us every grade level within 24 hours, and they said, nope, let's do it. Let's, we, the 3rd edition is done, when we looked it all over, we were going, and I said, okay, but here, oh, they were right on it. And when Brooke says that, you know, she's really proud of them, the response time has been amazing, um, so we're really looking forward to that. They are ready to start the school year, um, we just might have to do a little bit more printing the first 3 weeks until we get those print materials, but they are ready to rock and roll, um, so huge shout-out to the staff there for everything that they've done to get ready that way.
On the first day of school, both campuses will have onsite training for Wayfinder. Uh, the administrators have set out a year-long schedule of how that's gonna be, um, established and, and taught throughout the year to develop, to develop those, uh, common languages for profiled and graduate. So I'm looking forward to that rollout, how that goes for our families and students. And tomorrow, we have teacher mentor training, so on schedule, we have about 30 veteran teachers coming in to do some teacher mentoring tomorrow. So I'm looking, really excited about that conversation that we're gonna have, um, tomorrow afternoon, with those veteran teachers coming in, willing to support the younger staff that have come up. So this year, today, they started with new teacher, um, induction training, so I know the new teachers, we only had four this year, and they were leading with, um, a whole bunch of people today, so their rates were a little bit low. So hopefully our mentors can help take a little bit off of that. So lots of great things going on, and looking forward to start this week.
So Board reports. So we have to designate our MASP delegates, um, they will have to attend, um, in Grand Traverse Resort on Thursday, October 23rd. I, um, I'm going, so I can be one delegate, but.
I can go?
You can go.
Yeah, I got a place right down the street when I get done, so everyone's all perfect. I'll be right there.
And then we need an alternate.
I can, I have to go anyway for the, okay.
All right, so, that was easy. Um, and as a reminder, that if you plan on going to the annual leadership conference at MASP, I would say, you know, it's a great experience, everybody should go, um, they're filling up fast, very fast, so make sure you talk to Jana as soon as possible, if you wanna go to that, so.
And if you've never been to one, it's a really good thing to go.
It's not only just for the stuffy there, but even the networking and stuff, it's, it's a really great opportunity. I know I'm going, so, um, if anybody else wants to go. Any other board reports?
Okay, a few things, uh, from when I corresponded last time with you. In the last correspondence, I talked a little bit about the health clinic and what's taking place at the county level. Bad news in terms of, um, the doctor, Dr. Nevin, that is now the head of the Health Department, did not see, um, the clinics as being adequately oversight, overseen, and so, um, we had a mandate as of September 1st, the clinics closed. And we've kind of, there's, if you've been watching the paper at all, it's been pretty highly contested at the county level, in terms of the need for the health clinics, and it's not just the Algonac one, it's the Yale one, and it's, um, you know, the ones that they just recently opened. Then, the idea was that we would still be able to maintain the counseling services, which was all in place until Friday, when we got correspondence that, that too would be, um, fall victim to the shutdown. Now, with that said, I was in contact and had about a half-hour conversation this morning with Liz King, who is the head of the Health Department, and, um, just start talking about some potential different ways we could look at this, um, if oversight's an issue. I know she had reached out to Mike Bernowski and talked a little with him about would there be an interest with that work coming in, and maybe helping out a little bit, um, or if there was something we could work out. I don't even know that that's a possibility, but we're looking at different avenues, 'cause we do see it as a benefit for the kids. The counseling piece is a little bit different, because I think it's more of a time issue. What happened was when we went from, if you remember, a couple years back, we started with the counseling person as it was halftime, and it was through the Health Department grant. When that grant expanded, that was when we opened the clinic, and we were able to do that, and they kind of went hand-in-hand. The problem was when we did that, we changed the grant to a health clinic slash counseling. So that was part of the rub on why we ended up probably losing the counseling services. However, Liz has been in touch with the state and said that there is, that can be amended, it can go back, but it's a process and it'll take some time. So I do believe, at very least, we will, at some point, get back that counseling piece, which has been, you know, you could ask Ryan, and it happens that we just have a really good one in the building too. Carrie's, you know, done a wonderful job for us, but I saw her today, and she was pretty heartbroken about missing the kids here in Algonac. And it was, uh, but again, um, I don't think we're done with that, I think it's just gonna be a process to get it back in place. And see what happens with the health clinic too, 'cause I, I, it might not look like it did, but I think it may still be, um, still be a possibility. More good news coming for you, as I'm sure you're all aware, it is now the end of August, and we still don't have a budget. So, um, it's gotten, but it, this has become, um, I mean, it, it's ridiculous, obviously, that we're not there, but it's started to become pretty heated at the state level, and certainly with, um, super test, K-12 lights has been in a little bit of war with the groups. And just in terms of doing your job and getting, you know, this is a Ju- July 1st deadline, and here we sit, and school's open this week, and we're gonna open next week, and we still don't know exactly what the, you know, budget looks like. They, they've, both sides have assured us that the pot of money will be bigger than last year, but they're, like everything, the devil's in the details. Right at what, where, where is this money coming from? You know, we talked about like the importance of free deals for our kids, and I, I can't say that that's gonna be a place, I, I hope it is, everyone's hoping. I mean, as of right now, we're covered through the end of September, and beyond that, um, you know, if we don't have a budget by then, we don't know what that looks like. It, it's scary, and I, I was on, uh, I was in contact pretty much 3-4 times this weekend with Jade Boyer, and just kind of talking through some of it, and explaining the position that puts the school districts in that, it's not elegant, I haven't said it. But it just puts us in, um, just a real uneasy spot, and, um, you know? But, but I, I feel like, again, we've been pretty, uh, I think, pretty fiscally responsible over the years. We're, we're in a spot where if we miss the October state payment, we'll probably start to stick, keep the lights on, right? But, uh, you know, it's, at some point, it's like you, you know, if you get into October, and the new fiscal year starts, and we don't have a budget, it does, I mean, the scary piece of it is if there's government shutdown, and they're not going back to look at this stuff, I mean, how long do we?
Right.
Keep the doors open without an effect in the school year? So it's unsettling, but, um, they're at least back in, they're talking, so we'll see where that takes us. But it's, uh, not the way I'd love to start the year anyway. Um, with that said, a letter went out from the district asking for advocacy from, uh, parents of the community, just reaching out and letting people know the, you know, there's levels and layers to this, that, you know, potential of what could happen if this thing doesn't get taken care of. And I think it's never happened, like, not since I could, it's been a long time since we've even been in this position.
I can't remember.
And, and, um, so, you know, you really start to look, I mean, realistically, I'm rolling the dice that our budget looks like, I think it's gonna look when we get it. There's no guarantee on that, um, you know, we're opening schools fully staffed, like we did last year, all this kind of stuff. But, you know, if all of a sudden, uh, funding isn't there, or we all of a sudden have a $400 per kid cut for some reason, things might look real different second semester, so, just, uh, again, it, it's, I think the more importance that we put on that, and legislators know that this is crucial, and that people care about what's going on in the public schools, I think it will get done.
Are we gonna be pushing a free reduced lunch application then?
Yeah.
We need to make sure everybody fills it up.
Yeah, and we'll, and we'll do that anyway, Jen, because even when it was, you know, free, yeah, but yes, that will become even more important. Wanted to just update you, uh, Brooke and I met with, uh, Steve from Chartwells, uh, earlier this week. Nope, couldn't been earlier this week, must've been last week, it was last week. And just kind of, uh, you know, obviously, when we were going through the summer, we had some concerns and some, you know, how we wanted things to look on a day-to-day basis. I think it was a good meeting, um, we are, it was basically kind of going back over a meeting that we had, just highlighting the points of what the expectation is going forward, um, what the expectation is in terms of quality of food, all the types of, everything that we basically discussed back in the, uh, back in the spring. And, uh, we will have Brooke and I, I keep saying, I bring Brooke in on this, but I, I do that, and only because we had some bumps in the road at Algonquin. But, um, we will have a standing monthly meeting, so we'll meet every 2, last Tuesday of every month. But talked to the administrative team today about if there are things that start happening, don't wait till the end of the month. We want to address immediately, let me know, so I can, you know, do a little bit of investigation to find out why things are not going the way that we had discussed them. So it'll be just something where it's gonna be, you know, we wanna keep an eye on it, and wanna make sure they're providing what they had promised, so. Good news, uh, our App to G platform is up and running, and it's, you know, it's like anything, you roll it out, it's gonna take some time, and the bugs will be there. But, um, ultimately, this will be, this will change how we communicate with parents, it really will. There will be, you know, when, when we get good at it, we'll be able to fine-tune it to where we have it down to individual, not only classes, but groups. If it's, you know, one of the examples that was given, Joe's.
Can I ask you a question? Do you know how to use it?
Do I know how to use it, yeah.
Okay. So I log into it, but what is this rooms thing, and then it wants me to sign in, is that not for me?
Well, well, it, it can, yes, it's, so Rooms is gonna take over as our teacher-parent communication, so how like seesaw.
Seesaw, or, okay, so, so my kid was asking too, because like, so are the kids supposed to download this app also, or is this more for parent?
No, this would be more of a parent.
Okay, 'cause they're all thinking, they all have it, and they were trying to log in and set up stuff, and I'm like, hang on, I'll find out. It's not like you guys are supposed to sign into.
It, I, I mean, I don't think that it, I, I, I think that they can, but I just don't, I, I mean, it's kind of meant for the communications with their.
Okay, I'm just curious, 'cause I didn't, I can worry about that.
Yeah, sports as well, yeah.
Kids for sports.
They've been signing then, set up their own.
It's got, oh, coaches.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay, so that'll be something later that we'll do.
Yeah, and it'll be, yeah, in fact, the coaches probably are already starting to talk about it for fall sports, I'm sure.
That's probably, that's probably why she hasn't downloaded it, I just didn't know, I'm like, they won't probably sign into that rooms section, I don't know.
Yeah.
So I didn't know, if there's something you guys send us later that hooks into it?
Well, probably right now, there's no, there're, my guess, and I don't know this for sure, but my guess is they're waiting to roster before you could sign into it. So, um, but yeah, I, I'll have to find out about that for you.
Okay.
But that will be, like I said, I, I'm hoping that this is gonna be, um, something that gets information out fast, and we're trying to do it where it's segregated enough where it's not gonna be a constant, where my phone's got a million alerts, 'cause then I know that people will just put it away and stop looking at it. Uh, but at the same time, I do think that we'll be able to get information to the parents that are, where a message pertains to their kids, so. And then, of course, things like snow days and stuff like that will be, it's, that'll last out too.
Is it more of a blast out, or is it more of a?
Well, what it does, like, so with one message with a couple clicks, it can go to email, text, the app.
Would it be like interactive, like?
I mean, it, it's interactive when you're dealing with like rooms, for example, you know, that's back and forth, but like, there is a message, just a blast out message where we're.
But it would be a way for parents to contact, like, they're going to a band festival or something, or whatever it is, at a professional time, like. With times of us leaving. Yes, basically.
Well, and that's the thing, yeah, they should have, they, like I said, they will have that information, like there will, so the band, yeah. It'll be, it'll be a group that knows, gets that message only, so.
It seems like it'll be cool, like, once it's, um.
Gotta get it up and running, but it's, I, I think it's really gonna be, I just think it's a faster way of doing things, more efficient for our administrators too. And just gonna be something that, um, you know, you can get things out quickly, and if it, you know, cancel, I think the cancellations of games or events, and, you know, that information can hit you quick, and it'll last out to everybody, so. And then that's it, lastly, I have, and I'd be remiss if I didn't announce this, so Eugene Oshashanitz had retired from Algonac probably 15 years ago, but was contracted for us for several years, and worked in everybody, Eugene in total has worked over 50 years at the district. Um, he is officially, officially, uh, as of earlier this month, retired. Kinda had some, had some changes in his life, and decided it was finally time for him to be done and start enjoying himself. And so, uh, even though he's probably not, you know, I'd love to have him back for breakfast tomorrow, or for the opening breakfast, I don't think we're gonna quite get that done, but, um, you know, I, everyone's got a Eugene story, but most of it's all about all the things he's done for everybody in this district, so I just wanted to publicly make sure I acknowledge, um, the knowledge that we're gonna lose with that one is gonna be, although, you know, in typical Eugene fashion, said, call me if you need somebody, he's like, because he knows, he is the, um, before there was such thing as a database, he is our database, so.
The guy knows every button, switch, clean-out, cap, theme, uh, replacement parts, everything.
So that's it.
That's it? All right. Uh, any visitor?
No.
All right, and move on to our action items. First we have is this room. First we have is this room for policy updates. Anyone wanna make the motion for that? All right, I move that the Board of Education approves the three policy, July 2025, policy updates as presented. You want to support, or can we get supported, any discussion?
Just, just so you know on that, the first one, 4221, the only difference was there was a sentence added to it that basically gives an opt-out in policy 5407, which is also there. And that opt-out is just in terms of teaching curriculum and material covered in the classroom. It is a matter of fact...
It's a parent opt-out.
It's parent opt-out, right, and it is item seven under, or A, item seven, parent objects to their students instructional materials, employees will refer to the parent policy on 5407, which has also been updated for opt-out with a reason, or review, so. And that was it, that was our, that was both policies, that's all that there was this time through, so they took it easy on us on this one. Yep, that was an easy one.
Any other questions, comments? All right, move it supported, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, when she passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Quick on this. Support, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, when she passes.
She's being on some home meeting, I don't know how to get rid of that, just a good thing.
Yes.
He wants a long table.